Tonight's meeting is being convened in compliance with Governor Cuomo's executive orders, which suspend certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow municipal boards to convene meetings via video conferencing without in-person attendance by the public. The public has been provided with the ability to view, hear, and participate in the meeting, and a transcript of the meeting will be provided at a later date. The link to the live stream of the meeting has been provided to the public, and a video of the meeting will be made available on public access television, as well as a link on the town's website. Further, all submission materials and agendas are available to be viewed on the town's website. So I've determined that there is a quorum of members here present for the meeting, so let's call the meeting to order and move on forward. And go from here. So our first item is a continuation of a public hearing. This is on the Ferens application 10 Cabin Ridge Road. This is a preliminary subdivision plat approval application for a lot line change. And so we're in the midst of a public, very vocal, vigorous, robust public hearing on this application. And we've also had a resolution prepared for us in the event we move to that during the course of this discussion. So are there any members of the public out there, Pam, that you can see who might be listening?
Three.
There are three?
Yes.
Okay, if they're interested in speaking on this particular application, it would be appreciated if they would raise their hands. Raise your hand.
No one yet.
Okay. Kellen, any questions or comments from your standpoint? Or Bob? Okay. Jennifer, anything at all? And of course, board members, any questions?
I have none.
Okay. Eldad, nothing? Okay, I didn't. Well, not seeing any questions or comments from the public. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oh, hi, Tom. How are you? No, that was four zero. Okay. We have the resolution before us. Are there any questions, changes, additions? We got a series of changes yesterday, some wordsmiths, Smith changes. I don't think they're anything substantive. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Brad, did you have a chance to read it? It's okay from your standpoint?
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for asking. That's great.
Anyone, anything on this?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Tom? No bad? Okay. Accordingly, is there a motion then to adopt the resolution as amended in yesterday's version?
Shall move.
Is there a second?
Second.
I guess we do a roll call on this one. So Dick?
Yes.
Eldad?
Yes.
Tom?
Aye.
And I'm yes, and Canaan is not here. So that will be four zero and one absent. Okay, so we're all set, Brad. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Happy New Year. See you soon.
Nice to drop by. Happy New Year.
Please make sure the applicants do not advise people that it took 40 years because of the planning board. We're kind of sensitive to that. Thanks so much. Okay, we move now to our next item on this agenda this evening, and that's an informal appearance before the board. This is for the Hile application 15 Hammond Ridge Road. This is an application for a site development plan approval for an in-ground pool and stormwater management and erosion and sedimentation control pool. By the way, just as a matter of information, apparently, I have no idea where, but my property abuts this property like way up on top of a hill across wetlands. There have been-
Oh, is that right?
Yes. So we were actually put on notice about it, and we had no idea what this was about until I got the application material. So this, I guess, is the way I meet my neighbor from thousands of feet away.
Nice to meet you.
Anyway, until this moment, I wouldn't know the applicant if I fell on them. So I think from that, I think it's fair to say I can work on this application without problems. Not that I want to fall on you. Okay, so we have the application. And who wants to tell us about it? Is this for Chris Olson to tell us about it? Okay?
Everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right. My name is Chris Olson, project manager and designer for Wagner Pools. We've been hired by Mr. Hile to do a pool project at 15 Hammond Ridge. Actually, last year we got hired, so it's taken quite a bit of time to get to this point even. So the project is we'd like to do a 18 by 40, 18 by 42 pool with a spa and about 420 square feet of patio in the backyard in an existing lawn area. So when we first started with this project, we were going to have like a huge patio and a pergola and stuff. And then we discovered that we have some coverage issues. And part of that is that it's in the Hammond Ridge Conservation Area. So there's less coverage allowed on this property than, I'd say, on other lots in the town of the same size. So this lot actually is just underneath the existing or allowable coverage within the property line. But then when you add some of the driveway area that's actually on the neighbor's property, that puts us clear over. So there's really no available coverage to do any sort of modifications or renovations on the property. It's pretty unfortunate. So our idea or proposal to the planning board is to, well, three things really. There's two rather large areas of lawn that we could turn back into more native plantings or forest, whatever, and then also possibly do like a rain garden to pick up some of the driveway runoff. Sort of do these things as mitigation in exchange for doing a pool. Like I said previously, our first plan was to do a much larger patio and a pool, and we scrapped that idea. And then we did look into doing a second idea or alternative of, say, taking up majority of the asphalt driveway to get some coverage in which to do a pool. That was just to be two strips of stone going, you know, up this uphill driveway. It's not exactly desirable or going to be comfortable for the homeowners. So we decided to pursue planning board approval on these other ideas of, you know, mitigation rain gardens and removing lawn. Then we did receive the memos from the people in the town reviewing our application and plans. And the agreement that we had with Bob Ciolli was that I would act as the design professional for this planning board hearing, and that if you guys are on board with us doing this exchange, then we would pursue, you know, more formal drainage plans with an engineer at a later time to sort of finish the process. Anything you want to add, or?
No, if there's anything else you want to add, that's fine.
I think Chris covered it very well. I mean, we understand we don't have the coverage we would normally need to do this. So we're hoping we can propose something that's environmentally friendly. Sort of hopefully be a good exchange, if you will, that would allow us to have some additional coverage to do the pool.
Okay. Kellen, you have some comments that we should hear?
Sure, I can just run through the memo really quickly. So this is a 3.167 acre lot located at 15 Hammond Ridge. As the applicant said, it's in a conservation subdivision and an environmental overlay protection district. So that increases the wetland buffers. They're proposing a pool and patio. And as the applicant said, they did reduce the coverage from the two first proposed alternative plans, as well as the mitigation coverage for the two areas that are mowed lawn and turning those back into more natural areas. And they've proposed plantings, and I think that Dennis had some comments on that. This is a type two action. The application just has a couple of things they need to amend, the coverage calculation worksheet totals. Some of them were left blank. Page 15, the zoning performance table should list the conservation subdivision setbacks for the R1A, and that should be indicated in the application as well. And I already mentioned number four, there were two alternative plans. And one did mention, as the applicant mentioned, the 18-inch pavers for car tires would, I guess, forgive some of those coverage issues. But as he said, that's not desirable for the applicant, however they did propose it in an alternative design. On the site plan, the drawing S1 needs to, they need to amend the required or allowed setbacks, the list of conservation subdivision setbacks. Drawing S1, the building and development coverage table should include the approved allowed coverage per the planning board approval, the original approval from 2003. That drawing should also include the totals of the existing and proposed development coverage. S2, drawing S2 should reflect the setbacks from a proposed pool and pool equipment not to the house, as is listed on plan S2. And then the coverage calculations, the building coverage is in compliance at 4,069 square feet. And the development coverage is where there's an overage, as is there's an 843 square foot overage. And then if you add in the 1,479 square feet that for the pool and the patio that they are proposing, they're going to be over about 2,322 square feet. The applicant is proposing, like I said, to restore the about 11,400 square feet approximately of mowed lawn. And another thing that the applicant should clarify is in drawing S1 of View 1 shows an existing front yard lawn, and then there's an existing clearing grading limit line. And then there's a pink line that shows a new clearing grading limit line. But this is the only place that this is indicated in the entire application. And we just want the applicant to clarify if they're wanting to change that clearing grading limit line, if they're proposing to do this, they need to kind of suss that out. So that's all I have.
Kellen, the application, does it involve any steep slopes or wetland or wetland buffer? Any activity within any of these protected areas?
Nothing that I could, from the preliminary application, the pool is short of the steep slopes that are existing on the property. And the wetland, I think the closest wetland is over 200 feet off of the property. So unless Dennis has some other comments to that.
Okay, thank you. Dennis, you want to run through your comments?
Sure. With respect, I don't have any comment specific to the wetlands. But yeah, topographically, you know, it almost like sits at the top of a plateau. And, you know, for where the house is, you know, even doing some quick calculations on GIS for those, you know, those fairly large map system, it's a couple hundred feet and plus away. So I have no issues with respect to wetlands. Sorry, back to the memo. Yeah, just, you know, this is just sort of checklist items, the first few. Obviously, in View 3, that was on drawing S1, it doesn't look like it's in great condition, but there is a tree there. So if trees are going to come down, you know, regardless of condition, we'd just like to just be made aware of that. And then we'll, you know, make that determination as to whether, you know, they're in a condition that requires replacement or not. I did look at Mr. Ciolli's memo, and I know that there was a fair amount there with respect to the rain garden. So some of my comments with respect to that may be fleshed out in addressing Mr. Ciolli's. And also too, I guess, with respect to plants that you were proposing within the rain garden, specific to the species, as the planning board might remember, courtesy of some of my comments from Chapel Court Crossing, we like to have male and female winterberry specified if they're going to be planted, because the females are the ones that produce the fruits. And I had seen that there was another species that you were proposing that technically I wouldn't consider to be a native species. And in consideration of that term of conservation subdivision, we try to, I think I would like to keep all the plants, you know, that are going to be introduced, at least to be native to the U.S. As far as kind of what's proposed, I made sure that I, you know, visited the site and took a, you know, a walk around to take a look at, you know, what I would say is the surrounding more established existing community that, you know, hasn't been changed as a result of the residents and residents in the installation of lawn. So one, since we don't have wetlands, I know some of the species that we proposed, I feel that they may have difficulty surviving because they do like things a little bit wetter than you have at the existing site. So I would maybe consider substituting some of those species for ones that aren't as hydrophytic. Also too, I guess, with respect to any seed mixes, you're just going to want to make sure that you specify what that is. Because again, we would want the seed to be able to germinate based on the existing conditions. And then the next comment, you know, that I had was just sort of just to generally approach this as, you know, I want just a better alignment, I guess, with respect to what's existing with the surrounding environmental conditions. And then what you're proposing and potentially what the applicant's preference may or may not be. And I think that, you know, for me, that's why some of my comments, I almost couldn't really dive deeper into them because I felt that there was this sort of like an inconsistency potentially with, you know, wanting to be like, you know, more natural with the surroundings. But do you want that to be consistent with what's growing in terms of species that's native in the natural surroundings, or you're looking to, you know, propose what you want to propose? I generally sometimes like to look and see what's growing in the surrounding areas, you know, not for any other reason, just to, sometimes it helps to promote success because you could see what is doing okay, what is doing well. And then maybe you want to take advantage of that because obviously, if you're going to put in the cost and effort to plant plants, you want them to survive. So I just, you know, the plan sort of needs to sort of take a step back. And I think just better evaluate all of that in terms of coming up with a plan. But generally, yes, it is considered beneficial and a functional uplift to remove lawn and come up with some sort of restorative plantings. So those are, you know, just generally my comments. And I know this is preliminary, so I, you know, wasn't too concerned. I think you guys will, you know, you got the concept right. You'll do okay moving forward.
Okay. Thank you, Dennis.
May I comment on that, or?
Sure, please.
Okay. So we selected some, you know, some shrubs and some trees, and then also like a seed mix. And I was thinking that we would maybe run a till up the turf, the lawn that's there, just kind of establish a hedge to sort of establish a new clearing grading limit line, put a couple of trees in, and then sort of let the seed mix take over, and then let nature take it over the rest of the way. So I don't know if our intent was to try to fully restore all the full area right off the bat, and sort of give it a nudge in the right direction and make sure it's just not lawn anymore.
That's okay. That would be fine. But I still think some of the species that you had proposed, I'm not sure how well they would do because again, because if it's, you know, you got drier conditions there.
We have a landscape architect on staff at Wagner Pools. I'm also a landscape architect. So the two of us can go and take a second look at this and maybe come up with an alternative plant list or better evaluate the existing conditions, I guess, is more like what you're saying, so.
I'd like to suggest that we let the conservation designation be our sort of guiding principle on this. And to the extent that Dennis, to the extent that there are specific species that you would recommend for this project to bolster the conservation objectives, I would suggest that we be bold and be declarative about that. And more than just recommend them, perhaps require those species, obviously with the input of Mr. Hile. But I really think that, again, this is, this is a special designation for a special reason, and we should be, we should be building on that rather than backfilling with other species that perhaps don't necessarily meet that objective. I am encouraged and grateful that the applicant, excuse me, is willing to take away lawn and put in more natural vegetation, natural habitat there. I think it's a good move. I think it should be appreciated by the board. But having had, now having had that opportunity, I think we ought to go for it and be sure that we're putting something in which promotes the conservation designation.
Yeah, and just so we're clear, we're more than happy to take your guidance on any of those issues. So whatever works best in those areas, we're happy to plant that.
Thank you.
I had a question before we go to Bob. And looking at S2, it appears that there's a dividing line for the so-called pitch of the driveway up toward the top there that the green spaces on S2. What, we don't have topos. How severe is the pitch to the west down to Hammond Ridge Road? We know that the building's on the top of a knoll, but I just don't know how severe that is. And the reason I ask is, I agree, I think the two strips of concrete may be, you know, it's problematic. But what we have done in some areas in trying to mitigate some of the coverage areas is perhaps, you know, if again, the pitch is not too severe, is to use some sort of gravel approach on the driveway. If it's a steep pitch, that's going to be a problem and probably not a good solution. So maybe we should seize out of those topos and just see exactly what we have in terms of a problem or constraint on that driveway.
There's definitely a high point or crest there on the driveway.
Right, right, I see that.
Yep. I think that that driveway is just steep enough where gravel would be an issue. The maintenance, why? We would, right now, there's no curb down the side of the driveway. It's just asphalt to lawn. And if you were going to do gravel, we definitely would need a curbing, even still. It could be explored if you guys want to take a look.
Well, I'll turn that over to Bob Ciolli, and perhaps he can give us some sort of idea as to what benefit we might gain from a gravel driveway approach in terms of, you know, his scores and see if it makes any sense at all. And of course, if it's just too steep, we don't want to impose something that's just going to be a problem for the applicant.
Yeah, my recollection of the topo, when I did the inspections on it years ago when I was being built, that driveway is fairly steep. And in my experience, and even what I read in literature, any grade above 5% is really, doesn't do any well with type of gravel pave or gravel or echo stone. Because what happens is when it's too steep, it just goes along the interface between the soil, and it just goes and empties out by the street. And when you put a curb in there, it's going to act more like a flume and create more runoff onto the street. So I wouldn't recommend that in this particular case. But the Bob's point, you might want to look at maybe some gravel pave or echo stone or unilock at the flatter portion of the driveway by the garage entrance. And really, that will lend to maybe reduce the runoff at that point and maybe reduce the amount of storage capacity you would need in the rain garden, if that's what the planning board's wishes are, to do some sort of gravel pave or unilock at the flatter area by the garage. And that would be a planning board decision.
Yeah, I agree with Bob. I think that's exactly right.
Bob, does that give us, give the applicant any additional credit toward coverage? Or is it still counted as coverage?
Unfortunately, the way our codes are written, you do not get any credit for that. I know what Sabrina talks about, possibly maybe reviewing that, changing that in the future as far as legislation. But right now, the only thing you don't get penalized for is grass, really.
Has there been any history of problems with runoff on this driveway? Anybody know?
History of what?
Problems with the runoff from this driveway onto the street.
I haven't heard any problems with DPW because obviously, that's a town dedicated road that's been dedicated many, many years ago with icing or any conditions like that down by the roadway. So I don't think so.
Okay. All right. I just wondered if there's something we could remediate now if there was, if there was a problem. But if there isn't, then that's fine. A question about, Bob, you said that, you mentioned that the rain garden is part of the, is the pad up by the garage, is that runoff going into the, going, proposed to go into the rain garden?
Well, what they proposed to do is there's an existing drain inlet that collects water from the driveway where the pitch is coming towards the back of the property where the garage is. And they want to pick that up and empty that into a rain garden, which is a good idea. And I think they're doing that as some sort of credit or pick up additional stuff in addition to the amount you have to pick up for the new patio and the pool as well. I believe Chris can speak to that as well.
I just want to say, I had a question about the rain garden as well, but thank you for a very detailed-
Can't hear you.
You can't hear me?
That's very low.
That's better.
Is it better? I just had a quick follow-up question on the rain garden. First of all, thank you for a very detailed plan. The plan is really indicative of what you're trying to do. I just have a question about the extent of the rain garden. It almost feels like the location for your equipment is sort of sandwiching the rain garden between two contours in very sort of artificial way. And I wonder if the location of that equipment could change the size of your rain garden. I almost feel like it might be beneficial to the applicant as well, just in terms of what they will get out of it. It's really, it just feels very forced in that section, and I wonder if there's a reason for that. If it's that equipment, a box, can that be moved over? I see that 70 square foot equipment box, electrical equipment box or something.
That box is the pool filter equipment. So on that pad will be an electrical panel, a filter, heater, a pump, et cetera. That edge of the lawn there, it starts to slope downhill pretty steep after you go outside of the existing fence there. So that like pocket between where I show the pad and, you know, where the rain garden is depicted is, if we just build up that lower edge, it's kind of already nice setup for a rain garden. So that rain garden would be sized as big as it needs to be. And that pad could shift, it could move closer to the pool, it could move further toward the backyard. It doesn't really, you know, whatever works on that one.
Like you might have the opportunity to expand that rain garden in a way that is useful to the applicant as well. If that's what you're trying to get at.
Because that rain garden is going to accept not only the drainage from the upper part of the driveway, but it also could pick up potentially a good amount of square footage of lawn area too. Because it's all flown in that way anyway.
Yeah, and you have views and things like that set up from there. I just feel like that would be an opportunity. If that equipment is what's getting in the way, then it should probably move a little bit.
The rain garden and the two lawn removal areas, and now possibly replacing the upper driveway with like gravel or something, these are just, and now we have four different ideas of some kind of mitigation in exchange for the pool. These are just, and now we have four different ideas of some kind of mitigation and an exchange for the pool. So we could maybe get do two or three of these ideas and implement them in order to get the pool. Hopefully that would be favorable.
Right. Uh, Bob, you have your comments. We we've glossed off from so far, but uh, you've got some pretty important issues that have got to be resolved.
Uh, yes, thank you. Good evening. Basically, most of my comments pertain to, in typical fashion, the stormwater. Um, they're going to increase the impervious, um, basically on the latest plan they show is about fifteen hundred square feet. So therefore, it exceeds a thousand square feet per chapter one oh eight A, so they will need a SWIP for that. Uh, number two, based on my calculations, it looks to me they're going to be disturbing approximately sixty five hundred square feet. I know you showed a different number, but I just basically calculated the area within the limits of the construction limits. And I got about sixty five hundred. If that's the case, you'll just need a SWIP from the DEC for erosion and sedimentation control as well. That's number two. Uh, number three is just a technicality. Whenever you're in the east of Hudson, keep in mind you have to increase the uh, rain off amount of P is where it's P point of two point eight as opposed to one point five. Keep that in mind, that will increase the volume that you need to pre-treat for the water quality volume. Number four. Um, basically is regarding the test holes that would have to be performed for the rain garden. Anytime you use a rain garden, the only minimal requirement you would need is three foot separation from the bottom to the top of groundwater or bedrock. So keep in mind, you'll have to do those deeps for that. You don't have to do the perks. That's not required for rain gardens. Uh, number five, obviously, size it in accordance with section five three seven, which is out of the DEC manual in chapter five. And six, I think Bob hit on this before, I think it'd be helpful to provide a grading plan for where the new improvements will be, especially where the pool will be. And also you'll need a grading plan to show the more details of the rain garden and the associated piping. Uh, seven is pertaining to the clearing and grading limit line. And like Dennis and everyone else agree to make it clear that you're changing the clearing and grading limit lines to cut off at those areas. And I basically, what you're showing is you're going to donate back approximately eleven thousand four hundred square feet back into the clearing and grading, and I believe that's your intention. And if the planning board is inclined to accept that scenario, obviously, it's always standard to have the declaration which shows that and amended clearing and grading limit line map as well, which is reviewed by town council and filed in Worcester County Division of Land Records as well. And those are my comments for tonight.
And to build on, build on that, of course, if we're going to set up a another agricultural area, which has some benefit, although maybe not as much as if it were, you know, a improving a wetland setback. Um, we'll have to have a maintenance program to make sure that that, you know, those new plantings survive and have to be replaced. A minor point, I forget, if you have a a roof over a slate area or a roof that extends beyond, is that area part of the building? Or is that development area?
The roof overhang?
Yeah, it's a building, isn't it? Part underneath it, it's it's part of the building. It's kind of part of the building.
I would say so, yes. I mean, realistically, when they when they calculate the building footprint, I believe they use the building footprint when they do the building coverage. I don't believe they use the roof overhang.
Well, we had a problem with porches at one time. I remember a case where someone built a porch, you know, out of wood hanging up, and that was the building. Now, that had a floor and a roof. Now, the overhangs here, you know, have you know, just a roof. I'm just figuring, I'm just thinking if if there's some clarification on that, it might move, uh, you know, fifty or sixty square feet out of the development area and back into the building, which has a little bit of excess.
Yeah, I believe, I believe though, the way the definitions are set up, it's anything man-made structure on the ground that affects the grading. So, you know, that might be like a loophole roof area because it's really above the ground and not part of the ground. And all the calculations I've ever seen for building development coverage, uh, I believe they just use the building footprint. That answers your question.
Well, maybe. It's a small question, so it doesn't matter too much. One of the other things is that it's it's vague where the primary and secondary piping system is for the wastewater. And I would hope there's a drawing somewhere that shows it in more specificity. But I think we should review and make sure that the right borings were done and everything like that for the secondary area. Uh, you know, because this this whole place was set up about seventeen years ago. Uh, you know, and so I I think that data should exist, but I think it would it would be good to include it in this package. You know, so that the the areas are more identified. So no one accidentally does something back there that they shouldn't be doing. That's the minimum. And then secondarily, uh, was did the county agree that, uh, you know, that one system, uh, I don't know if the second system was built. Uh, I don't know where that is, but I think that should should be part of it too, just to bring the records up to date.
Yeah, we should have that designated on the plat here. Yeah, I agree, Dick. Good point. I had a question for, um, uh, Mr. Olson, and that is with regard to, um, you're on the top of a hill on a knoll. Have you done a so- uh, soil borings only from the standpoint, I don't think it has a material impact on where we are. But I know you've got the deep end of the pool toward the east. Uh, you're on top of a knoll, which would suggest that you're going to be sitting on rock. Um, what's the plan in terms of chipping, blasting? I don't think blasting, but uh, chipping and then might you turn the pool around just to even reduce the amount of chipping, thinking that as you go further east and you start to go down the slope, you might be getting into less soil and and getting closer to the bedrock as it drops down. Just, I don't know if you've done that or not, just to see. Uh, I know you, I think this pool is going to be eight feet deep at its deepest.
Yes. As as of right now, we've not done any test pits on the property for drainage or for pools. I don't think I've actually done a pool project or even invested beforehand in doing test pits or borings to see where the rock was in the pool site. Usually we dig it up and we see what we got and then we chip. And sometimes we do flip the pool or we make the pool shallower to try to minimize rock chipping.
Right, right, okay.
That's that's definitely a possibility.
Well, another another drawing I think we need is, I don't, I don't see where any of the adjacent houses are.
On on S one, there is a diagram that shows distances from the high property to the neighbors.
S one, alright.
Upper left hand corner, I think.
They did the best they could with the Google Maps image and put some dimensions on there. Closest house is over two hundred feet away from this residence.
Yeah, those are those are, I I don't see where the adjacent houses are.
Uh, the diagram up in the middle of the page with the upper left hand.
Oh, there it is. I missed that, okay. But I sure would, it looks vegetated heavily enough, but I would want to make sure that the the, um, at least the one house that's two hundred and twenty-five feet away is protected or vice versa. You know, given that you're going to have a pool back there, we like to have some sort of additional privacy. Uh, I don't think the other houses would be impacted. But I saw it, I would like a little more information on that as to what it looks like from that adjacent house.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got it. I've actually, right now, Dick, I've got it, uh, on Google Earth. And, uh, there's a significant amount of vegetation.
Okay, good.
Whole area.
Yeah, I mean, for what it's worth, in the summer, you can't even see the other house. In the winter, when all the vegetation clears out, you can sort of see it through the trees, but.
That's okay, but you won't be swimming much in the winter, probably.
I I doubt it.
Ice skating if it gets cold again.
Perhaps, that could work. Yeah, you definitely cannot see the adjacent houses.
Okay.
Backyard.
Uh, uh, looking at this, uh, Google Earth photograph, I noticed that the, uh, and I remember Bob, we we approved this subdivision in the original subdivision plan, didn't we?
You did.
Oh, sure. I I really sort of.
Were you on the, were you on the board then?
Oh, yeah, I I resented Bob's reference of many, many years ago earlier on. But yes, Tom, we're involved in this subdivision, yes.
I remember it well, and I always thought, I always thought it worked out pretty good, actually. Yeah, I have a question about the driveway, looking at it on Google Earth. By the way, uh, Bob, I also see your house on Google Earth here.
Stop staring at it.
Well, there there are going to be some questions for you later.
Reminds the little itty bitty house to the right there.
Uh, so I have questions about the cut through the ridge line to get up to the to the house location. Is that is that, um, slope on either side of the driveway going down to the driveway from the ridge line down is is that vegetated at all with anything that will help prevent, uh, uh, surface, a lot of surface runoff coming down off the ridge and onto the driveway? Is that a concern?
On the sides of the driveway?
Yeah, it looks like there's a swale between the bottom of the ridge and the driveway that takes the water down to the road, I'm guessing.
Um, not not so much. Uh, the water, I I don't think there's like, uh, there's no catch basin or anything definitive down there. Water actually sheets pretty flat on the driveway downhill.
Okay.
That upper part of the green where from the columns at the property line up to the ridge, it's actually very flat. We actually did an exercise one day dumping buckets of water down the middle of the driveway to see if we could do a rain garden down there or something like that. And, uh, it doesn't really pitch to one side or the other. It's pretty, it's pretty flat.
No, I was talking about the bridge line, okay. Anyway, it doesn't, it doesn't look like it's going to be a a big deal. So, um, looks good to me.
Are the fields for the septic in the woods? I'm just curious.
Yeah, they're off the back of the property, way down at the bottom of the hill, like nowhere even close to any of the stuff we're doing.
What was the question, Con Conan? It's it's really hard to hear you.
Sorry, I don't, I, the septic, uh, it seems to be way out there, like, you know, in the woods. So I was just curious whether the fields are anywhere close to where they're building, so it doesn't seem.
No, on on S two, I show on the the one that shows the pool, you look to the far right of the page. There's an existing septic located here, and it's it's way downhill and way away from what we're doing.
So the fields are there as well.
Yes. We we're not sure where. But there must be a drawing somewhere from, you know, at least seventeen years ago when the subdivision was set up.
Yeah, there's there's definitely a drawing on it, and and I recall this, one of the challenges and one of the reasons this is a conservation uh, development is there were many, many challenges in terms of geography, rock. Uh, soils were very difficult for septic for perk. So we have some of these very attenuated, um, fields, uh, and septic areas. Uh, and you know, not the least of which, uh, sloping down this way feeds into, uh, you know, the croton watershed. So DEP was involved. It was, uh, that's the reason why it's a conservation development. So going, harkening back to Tom's comments, you know, customarily, we we really look at these very carefully, at least I do, and and say, gee, you know, there's a reason why we set these boundaries in terms of development and coverage. Uh, they are usually in ultra sensitive areas. And that's the case with this, but we don't have any impacts to wetlands. We don't seem to have any impacts to buffers. Uh, there might be just one tree, there are no impacts to steep slopes. So it seems to be fairly innocuous, even though it's conservation agree, uh, agreement. Conservation development. Um, so and and the applicant is working with us in terms of other areas that might mitigate this, uh, the overall measurements. So from my standpoint, I I think this is one that somehow, some way, we'll we'll be able to figure this out and work with the applicant to get this done.
Yeah, I sort of see it the same way, Bob. All we're doing or all that is being proposed here, it seems to me is replacing lawn with a swimming pool. So I, it's hard to see that, uh, you know, it's almost sort of, uh, no harm, no foul in terms of, um, uh, reducing the amount of habitat area, et cetera, et cetera, that we worry about a conservation subdivision. So I, it feels to me that it's pretty straightforward, especially if we get mitigation for the overage on the on the development coverage by, uh, reducing the grading clearing limit line and expanding the conservation habitat.
Yep. Good.
Well, I I think that there's value in that for sure, but it it it's not clear to me how much yet. Um, you know, given Dennis's comments that that it's, uh, yeah, it'll be vegetated. But if we have a management plan on it, uh, on something we all agree on, then I'm I'm happy with that. I I had, now the pool is going to be emptied, um, you know, in the fall or something like that, and the water is going to go into the underground system.
Uh, well, each each season for winterizing, about, uh, eight inches or a foot of water would be taken out of the pool. And it could go into that underground detention system, yes.
Okay, because I wouldn't want the over, that that detention system to be overwhelmed and push more water down towards the septic systems. You know, it might get a spring popping out.
We always do require the applicant, especially in conservation subdivisions, to re, to use the pumping system for the pool and connect that directly into the infiltrator. So they do use that for the overflow drawdown.
Right, but I I wouldn't want it all to be pumped out in one day.
No, it goes into the infiltrators. And they'll size it for that as well. Whichever requires more storage is what they use.
Okay.
One last point, um, uh, to Bob's, uh, point about the direction in which the deep side of the pool would be. Um, you might, there maybe, it seems like there's at least three or four feet of a drop if it was to go parallel to the house. It's just, I mean, I'm not suggesting one way or the other. But it just seems like you might be able to accommodate a better, uh, drop without actually having to dig a lot. So that's something you might want to look at. Um, as the applicant, I mean, I I don't think it matters in terms of direction and things like that. But, uh, especially if rock matters and how you dig matters, then actually moving it to be parallel to the house might work better for you with the deep end getting closer to the rain garden.
I think that's why it's important, uh, that the the next step, we see a grading plan. We understand how all that works.
Yeah, good. Okay, uh, Felicia, um, and and Kellen, uh, next steps on this. We want to see some revised plans and then set up for another informal and then take it from there. Jennifer, eventually this will need a public hearing.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So, um, whatever you guys can get the the materials in, we'll get you scheduled and and get this moving. I'm I'm sure you're anxious to get this going for the spring or summer, so.
For sure.
Yeah.
So just to be.
Thank you so much.
So just to be clear, you, the planning board, you guys are uh, on board with this idea of exchanging lawn for pool project, and we should go ahead and get a civil engineer on board to develop, you know, official drainage and grading plans and whatnot, right?
Yeah, I think I I think frankly, it's it's not that we're really on board, we're really something, this is what we would require is mitigation. Yeah.
Good, sweet.
Alright. So whenever you're ready, please let Felicia know, and we'll get you scheduled and we'll see you again.
Alright. Thank you, everybody. We really appreciate your time.
Okay, thank. Okay, um, our next two items are requests for extensions. We have a request for an extension at seven sixty-seven King Street LLC Chiselhurst subdivision lot number six. Uh, this is a request for an extension approval site development plan, seven sixty-seven King Street. Um, so apparently they're making progress, but by the same token, there's still some issues out there. And I think, uh, Bob and Kellen, you can probably, uh, support us and tell us that they are, you know, making good bona fide progress and that the extension is, um, is reasonable.
Yes, I've been getting, uh, information from Alan Pilch, their consultant regarding these matters, and we've been getting some information from the attorneys that, uh, we're looking at regarding the documents that need. From the attorneys that uh, we're looking at regarding the uh, documents that need to be submitted for the conditions for the resolution.
Okay. So, uh, what are they requesting? I was a little confused in terms of some of the dates look like some typos in here. Um, what are they requesting? How how long an extension, Felicia, are they requesting? I guess to April four. Ninety day extension, I believe.
Yeah.
It is a ninety day, yes.
Okay, is there a motion to grant the extension requested by the applicant? Up, up, Steven, did you have an issue?
Uh, yeah, I I thank you, Mr. Chairman, and happy new year, everyone. I I just wanted to clarify, there's a few uh, different. Deadlines coming up in this in this approval, so we're actually requesting uh, three extensions, if you wanna call it that. Ninety days, you're correct, for the time to have the site plan signed by your board. Uh, as well as one year extensions of the wetland permit and tree removal approvals. Uh, the wetland permit, I think we had to file. A certain number of days in advance, which is why we're asking for it now, uh, and so we thought we would ask for the tree removal extension as well at this time.
Okay, any questions or issues on that? Uh, do we wanna grant uh, a year extension?
I'm not thrilled by it.
Yeah, I was just gonna say very often, well, we we go six months, something like this to get some sort of feel as to what's going on and. Just so that the the board and staff uh, are are kept uh. Kept in the loop, but I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other. Well, I'm not uncomfortable with it in that uh, unless uh, I misunderstand what uh, what uh, Bob Cioli is saying, Bob. You uh, they are working with you to uh, get some of your questions answered and get some information in. In other words, they're trying to make progress.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so in that case, I I have no problem granting the extension. Okay. Eldad, can I, any issues, questions on it?
No issues.
Okay, so we probably will have a vote of uh, four, four, one not thrilled. Not so sure how we report that. Uh, is there a motion to grant the extension uh, as requested by the applicant or the extensions as granted, uh, as requested by the applicant?
Motion, so moved.
Second.
Sorry.
Read your second.
I'll do second.
Alright, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion's carry five zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Happy new year, have a nice evening.
Yep, and finally, we have an extension for SG Chappaqua and B LLC for the master subdivision plan, final subdivision of the application. Uh, for the master subdivision for eighty, um, better road, so uh, hi Janet, how are you?
Happy new year, everybody. Thanks for having me. Um, so we were before you a couple of months ago. We had submitted the plat to the Department of Health. Um, we needed a little bit of extra time. We've we've uh, we've gotten that back. There are still some. Things that we need to do before, Mr. Chairman, you can sign the plat and they're a minor in nature. I'm almost there. Uh, but obviously, it wasn't going to be done by today, so we're requesting a ninety day extension. Uh, I hope that we will be able to uh, get before you, Mr. Chairman, for signatures on that plat, hopefully by the end of the month. Um, but we are, we are getting there.
Okay, great. Um. Is there a motion to uh, grant the applicant the extension, the ninety day extension that they are seeking?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Tell Felix, see if he doesn't show up and carries really quickly.
Okay, thank you very much. Nice to see you all.
Good to see you, thanks. So I think that's uh, all we have on the agenda, and just as a reminder, we have our meeting on the form-based code on Thursday. I believe that's at six thirty, right?
Yes.
Kellen, six thirty? So a discussion on the form-based code. Um, Sabrina sent around information on, I I can't, I don't have it in front of me, but. Eight or nine points that we kind of decided would be the framework for the discussion. It will not necessarily uh, guide us completely, but it certainly should help us um, with the discussion. And I think despite her condition, that Sabrina intends to participate as well. So Jennifer, is is Nick filling in on that meeting or are you doing it or both or?
This is the first I'm hearing of it, so I'm assuming that Nick is covering it.
I I actually have already, uh, yes, cleared that. Nick is covering it.
Okay, good.
Okay, so we'll see everyone on Thursday. Is there a motion then to close the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, very good. Good night, all.